Well, prepare to swing.
Well.
That's why Tyler's waiting.
Well, I would like to call the committee, the whole meeting of September thirteenth. To order and ask if there's any other additions to the agenda at this time. And hearing that we'll start with delegations on the utility master plan and we have an online presenter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I can introduce this quickly. We've got the UMP that was conducted by Associated Engineering. This was approved in 2019's capital budget and we have now got all three of the aspects of the UMP completed. And so I believe Associated is waiting online to present their findings. I believe either Paul or Laurel should be there.
Hey, sorry, it's Paul here. I was just trying to find the unmute button here.
Great, thanks, Paul. I'll let you introduce yourself and whoever else might be there.
Okay, perfect. So here, I'll turn on my camera just so council can see me here, mayor. So I guess hello, mayor and council. My name is Paul Delik and with social engineering. I am the project manager for this project here, which was a utility master plan update for both the water or for the all three. Yes, water, sanitary and storm. Infrastructure in this city of Potasquen. So as a project manager, I looked over all aspects of the project and mostly took credit for my other two team members here. We actually, oh, perfect. And then we got the presentation slide up as well. So. What we're going to do, I guess, the two other individuals who are joining me today and who will do most of the talking is Candace got signed. She did the water master plan and Laurel Richards, who was responsible for the. Sanitary and store master plan. My apologies if I'm not looking directly at the camera, I'm running two screens here. So unfortunately, the presentations on the big of the big screen of the two. So Laura, if we can switch through to the next slide here, I guess Andrew, is there anything else or was I able to jump right into this today?
Yeah, it's all you. Go for it.
Awesome. Okay, thanks so much. So. Just so I do get to do a little bit of talking, they gave me two slides to present, so I'm very excited for that. First one is the outline of what we'll be presenting today. So. We're going to go with the water master plan first, followed by the storm and then the sanitary. No particular reason, just that's the way we prepared them for the city. For each of them, what we'll be looking at doing is discussing the key design criteria and what this is is parameters that we use to develop the models and the plan itself. And try to keep it within those parameters, which would meet the level of service that the city has set up for themselves. From there, we're going to skip over the technical component that is. Developing the models and how that all came to be unless anyone's really interested in that, but that's mostly just calculations and iterations on the model software. We'll jump right into the results and what's being produced for the current system. And then as well, what the system will need to go undergo to provide a level of service for the the proposed growth in the city. With the results that are produced or any upgrades are required, we've actually developed cost estimating to put kind of a rough price on what will be required. For funding to to bring up to those level of service requirements. And then at the end of every master plan provided to to the team here, we have a conclusion and a recommendation. And we just want to pick out the key points of both the conclusion recommendations. So. Next slide there, Laura, please. Okay, so before I get into the objective and scope real quickly, just wanted to touch base on what a master plan is. And it is a very high level plan, which is to identify, one, how the current system is performing. And then if there's any shortfalls and what those shortfalls would require for. What improvements we require to address those shortfalls. And then as well, it's used as a growth plan. So as the city proposes its development and growth, especially for what task going growing out to the outer city limits. What infrastructure is required to be in place to support that growth. And then that's all kind of bundle up in one big package and it's it's used not to be a document that's read every single day. But instead, a plan to, as the city is selecting where they're developing next, or as they're moving to a reference document to show what should be being put in place as well. It's also to be used as a a check when the city is implementing any projects that are coming ever ongoing. And these can be based on either planned development or rehabilitation. So if there is a line, for example, a sanitary line has collapsed, touch wood that that hasn't happened. But in, you know, if it was to have happened, we would hope that the city references this document to say, okay, if we're in there fixing it, how big should this line be? Is it in the master plan that it's an area that needed to be upgraded? And then as well, if you're in there referencing the storm and water master plans, though you were looking at the sanitary, the storm, if it's the water line, if it's adjacent to it. And it was proposed to be upsized for future growth, maybe this is the time to to look at that while you're ripping up that road anyways to fix that infrastructure. So they should always be cross referenced between each other, which would be a great practice. So now jumping back to the objectives and the scope, the the scope here, what we want to do is. The city has a model for each of these utilities. We wanted to bring that up to current development. So it's been nearly a decade since anything has happened. To the models themselves. Now, the city has grown quite a bit since then. So what we did was we put on all the new development, all the new areas. And then all the projects that have been completed in that time, any upsizing or rerouting or things like that. So that's all been up to date. So now the city has a current model for each of these pieces that reflects how. Where the city's existing state is at. Then we ran those models, validated them based on different criteria, which you'll hear from the other two. And seeing how the system. I guess reacts or how it's performing currently. From that, we were able to identify any shortfalls in the system and and then once again, how to address those shortfalls. Looking at here, if there's anything else, no, I covered all the other ones there. And now just a quick update or a quick touch on the. The results here. Play spoiler alert for the other two, but what task one is a very. Or fairly, I guess, flat city, which is a really good thing and not a great thing, depending on which system you're looking at. Because it is so flat or relatively flat, the water system. Where it works really well with the water system. And this is because when you have different elevations, you get head pressure. And as a result, as things drop, you get higher pressure in your water lines and you have to actually drop things to different pressures zones. Blending itself to being relatively flat, everything can kind of ride into the same pressure zone, which was Kansas will touch on. And it worked really well for the water system and it's offering great. On the flip side of that, the storm system, everything is run by gravity and you want everything to flow from high to low. And being that it is relatively flat, you don't have that. Luxury of have using all the surface to flow towards the the drainage dishes which run through the city. So you have to use more pipes and things like that to get everything to that location. So on one hand, it's really great. And on the other hand, it causes some some issues. So and then that's a little bit of foreshadowing what's to come. The only other thing we really, well, it's one of the other things we really found was that. The city has obviously been developed from downtown core outwards. And that's represented a lot in these figures here. We'll notice that the the oldest part of the city or the downtown core is. Has the smallest infrastructure or was built at to accommodate the sizing that was acceptable then. And as standards have changed and the rest of the city grew, those have been adjusted to accommodate the new size requirements or level of service where the downtown core hasn't been fully updated yet. So you're going to see that as well. So things to things to watch for through these presentation. So. Enough. So, oh, and lastly, sorry, is when we go through the presentations here, will each presentation will run about 10 to 15 minutes. And then we'll leave, we'll open up the floor for questioning after each one. And the reason we thought of doing that is that if you have a question on the water one, and by the time we get to the sanitary, we don't want you to forget your question. So we'll open up the floor for, you know, five minutes of various questions and answer that, then we'll go through the other presentations. And at the end, if there's anything else we missed or that you were hoping for or want some clarification, we'd be happy to provide that. So that being said, I will turn the floor over to Candace, who will shed some light on the water system.
Thank you very much, Paul, and thanks to Laurel, who is running this for us. So that's excellent. Okay, so we're just going to start with the some key design criteria that we use in the model and in master planning. So the first really key criteria is in terms of population. So we did look at some historical population. You can see I've clipped it on the top right hand of the screen here. And that was the twenty years prior to 2016. So we had 20 years worth of of growth to look at. And in those 20 years, we looked at the five year and and the 20 year and we found that growth was on average under 1%. But in discussion with the city, we did adopt a 1% growth to really accommodate projected future expansion and growth within the system. So so that's what we've utilized in the model and our planning. Population density, that's the people per hectare. And we use this to distribute demands within the model as well as in future growth to think about how many people are going to, you know, occupy these lands and how much additional demand we need to plan for. So for single family residential, we applied 40 people per hectare. And then for commercial institutional, we used 35 people per hectare. And then industrial, we applied 30 equivalents, or these equivalent when it's not actual residential, so 30 equivalent people in industrial areas. And really, the key criteria that we use in in water distribution modeling is the per capita consumption. So we did look at some historical information. We were provided, it was a few years worth of water usage. And we did find on average a value somewhat less than 300 liters per cap per day was what you're currently using. For purpose of modeling and for future planning purposes, we have adopted again in discussion with the sea, a value of 300 liters per cap per day. Now, we assess fire flows utilizing a peak day demand. So your average day demand times a factor. So for this plan, it's a factor of two. So we add that demand to fire flows, which are based on different land uses. So in a task when they could range anywhere from 83 liters per second up to a high of 233 liters per second. And we'll be able to show you those results coming up shortly here. And then as well, we did look at C factor. So C factor is the measure really of pipe roughness of inside of a pipe. And so we did some testing to help ensure that we're using the best values for a task when and that the model would best. Provide a really good, validated, reasonable model for your distribution system. So we did the testing, applied those results. Then we went on to plans. So we had a land use plan where we would apply demands and fire flows. And then again, with the city, we developed a staging plan, which we have coming up next. Laurel, if you could switch that, thank you so much. Okay, so this this plan was developed to identify staged growth. So we've broken it down into four different stages. So stage one, the initial one is in green. The second stage is showing yellow, stage three is in blue, and the ultimate development is up to the city boundaries as shown in red. We've looked at two generalized land uses. So the ones with little dots or they might even show up quite flat is residential, future residential. And non-residential show a show sorry is a crosshatch, so the diagonal lines. Now, we have chosen to. Assess staged growth in terms of the staging benchmarks. So development in these areas versus target years, which sometimes is done. But we just find that. Plans tend to stay more relevant this way when we're looking at development of an area. If development slows down or it's significantly less than 1%, then it takes a little longer to develop that area. But the infrastructure required remains the same. If you just use your five, 10, 15, it can seem a little outdated, no longer is relevant. And then we just show here some ultimate populations and a target year, looking at that growth rate, but that's really to help us assess other components as well. Could you do the next slide? Thank you. So this is the existing system, a brief overview of it. Your water is treated at Cool Lake, which is approximately 10 kilometers to the east. There are a couple of mains which bring it into the city into the garden meadows reservoir and pump house, which is the pump house shown with the blue dot in the top right corner. At that, thank you, that's perfect. At that pump house, there are some distribution pumps, some standby fire pumps, two of those. And there's also two transfer pumps, which then transfer the water from that site. Via another couple of mains, primarily a 450 concrete pressure pipe, all the way down to the central reservoir and post, which really. You know, as as for the name suggests, is right in the center of the city, there's a couple of above ground reservoirs at that location. Now, these pump houses operate at different pressures. So the garden meadows was designed to operate at a higher pressure to help accommodate some of the fire flow pressure requirements at the home hardware depot center. Isn't that right? And so it's about 100 PSI, so higher than typical distribution pressures. Whereas the central reservoir and pump house operated around 70 PSI, so significantly less and more in line with what we would see typically. And now because garden medals operate so much higher, there's two other facilities. There's a north PRV station, which is just to the north of facility. And thank you. And immediately south of the facility is another one. And and these are pressure reducing valve. Chambers whereby the pressure is is cut down as it goes through that. So both of the facilities, both central and garden metals contribute significantly to overall water used in the city. It's not quite 50 50, but but very close. The results that we're showing here, there's really two key criteria that we use to assess existing distribution system. The first of which is a pressure. So these are the peak hour pressure results we're showing in green. So which is essentially everything south of the little red line, so the little red line that runs along the northeast. That's delineating the two pressure zones. So the higher pressure zone from garden metals and the lower pressure zone, which is the vast majority of your distribution system. So everything in the the primary pressures on that large main pressure zone really meets the target pressures we're looking for, which is anywhere between 15, 80 PSI. Again, typical distribution pressure. And then we're just identifying above that as expected, knowing that the garden muscles operating higher than typical, we see higher than typical pressures. Next slide, please. Now, this slide is showing the other key criteria that we assess distribution systems. And that is the available fire flow. So we, I showed you previously in our key criteria that we had various target fire flows and they are completely dependent upon the adjacent land use. And so we then assess each location or each node, the little circle. Based on the available fire flow and how closely it may meet or exceed the target fire flow, what we would like to see. So the green dots identify that regardless of its location or the land use, that the available fire flow will meet or exceed the target fire flow. So that's perfect. That's just what we want to see. The other colors denote a lesser percentage of available fire flow compared to the target we'd like to see. So the blue would be 80 to 99% that sort of thing. And we go down the colors until we hit red, which is 40% or less. So for the most part, again, the vast majority of these locations are shown green. So that's great. Some locations which may not fully meet the the target fire flow would be the southeast industrial for one. And then other just really common things or or locations we'd see in doing these types of assessments. And those would be dead end mains, including cul-de-sacs. High value properties and sometimes maybe partially developed locations, you know, it's the first stage of a development. So so these sorts of things, they may not fully meet. And then we just identify how close they may come by text. Next slide, please. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So here we're showing proposed upgrades to be implemented, which help the system better meet those target fire flows. There's still the odd location that may not fully meet because again, it requires some looping, which may be better accommodated in some staged growth. But for the vast majority of these locations, fire flow can be met by implementing these. Proposed upgrades. So we have with these thicker lines, there are the light blue, the darker blue and the pink. These are all proposed new or upgraded mains to be constructed. Also, just noted on the bottom there that we do recommend that as the city is going through and making upgrades for various reasons. It it could be there's aged pipe or there's just an opportunity for other improvements in the area that you keep in mind some minimum recommended sizes. That the smallest of which would be recommending a 200 millimeter main and single family residential locations. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we're looking at staged growth. I believe this is the stage one development. So we're still showing upgrades to the existing system, really so they're not lost. They're still required for both existing fire flow and then in some cases to help accommodate future growth. But here we're showing expansion into the stage one lands. And these are the key mains really that are required to support expansion into these areas. So yeah, so just some expansion there. Next slide, please. And then we're going to see over the next two or three slides, just further expansion. Here we're expanding into stage two lands. Next slide, please. And here we see things continue to grow. So further development, stage three lands, we're showing here some slight rerouting of some mains around the north PRV station. Which are result in a small change and the two pressure zones. And really, this is to accommodate some of that looping we see immediately to the west or to the left of that. Next slide, please. And then again, we're just showing the key mains, not all the mains, there'll be more development and some smaller. Means within these areas, but these are the key means to support development right up to the city boundaries again in the north. In order to accommodate or in order to service more land at the lower, more ideal pressure zone, we're showing an additional PRV station. This is in the ultimate development. Next slide, please. And then in addition to assessing water mains, we also looked at both the pumping and storage capacity analyses. So the first being the pumping, we looked, we tested over the 25 year design period at the time and found that there was sufficient capacity to both meet. Typical distribution demands as well as the standby fire pumping or the peak day plus fire flow demands both now and 25 years into the future. That's great. And the same thing for the storage capacity analysis, we found that there was sufficient capacity to meet the needs today as well as moving into the future. Next slide, please. And cost estimates. So you know, the vast majority of costs we're showing here are really upgrades to the existing system in terms of water mains. So with an estimated value of 13.4, 13.5 million dollars. And recognizing this is a large price tag, we would anticipate that this would be, you know, accommodated in some capital planning to, you know, implement it over time. We have not costed any upgrades to accommodate expansions. So we see the stage one, two, three and ultimate developments scenarios. There are no water mains costed there because we we would anticipate that those would be accommodated by the developers. And they aren't a significantly large diameter mains. They're all 300 millimeters and under. We've also, we have identified some the the kind of rerouting of the main adjacent to the north PRV pipe or PRV station as well as an additional PRV station. But these are in stage three and an ultimate, so we're still a long ways off. Next slide, please. Okay, so in conclusion, again, thinking back to that first figure we looked at, all the pressures. Almost all the pressures fell within the recommended range. Really, it's just that little bit serviced directly by garden meadows pump house. Really in that upper pressure zone in the northeast, which exceeded it. And it was to be expected, understanding how that was. Designed. We found that some locations within the distribution system did not fully meet the peak day plus fire flow criteria. And that's not to say that there isn't fire flow available in those locations. It's just not to the quantity that would be our target based on the adjacent land use. We found that there was sufficient pumping and storage capacity. And then the transmission system, so the the pumps and the pipe which takes the water from garden metals over to central, that also had ample capacity. So no problems there. And then we did find that some locations may not have sufficient hydrant coverage. However, some of that information was incomplete. The next slide, please. Thank you. And so recommended or recommendations, right? We we recommend that you do proceed with the water main upgrades presented in the figures. We recommend that the city do review and update hydrant locations such that maybe shortfalls or. Just ensuring that there's good hydrant coverage throughout. We would recommend the city plan for stage expansion as proposed and presented. We would also recommend some really some tweaking to some of the PRV set points, just to ensure that they're both operating. Fully and equally to allow good turnover. And we would recommend then that the city also monitor performance to ensure that it's working how we were proposing. We're also recommending that the capacity through those PRV stations be confirmed. And then as well, just recommending that minimum water, water main sizes as recommended that they be installed where practical. We, for the last two here, we recommend that city undertake regular flushing of the water mains. And then that they operate, inspect and maintain all valves and hydrants. I think that's it. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have on your water system or any recommended or proposed upgrades or expansion.
So are there any questions at this time? So Bronco.
Thank you to the chair. The system we have now, if we were to hold a do-hold system, if we weren't to spend that kind of money. How long could we sustain this infrastructure at what we got right now?
Sorry, I don't understand. So if you were to do nothing, or I missed the first.
You're asking for upgrades and.
Yep.
Everything sewer, bigger pipes and everything.
Yep.
How long could we handle this system before something breaks down? Or could we go two, three years without this? Or do we have to do it? Do you have to implement it right away?
Right, right. And that's a common question we get too, because sometimes the figures can look really alarming in terms of the fire flows. And and there it's a big price tag. So. It can be done over time. I mean, everybody has to do it over time. The reality is that if you want to meet these criteria, these are the associated upgrades that are going to be required. Again, in that one figure, that fire flow figure, we're showing that, you know, we might be recommending a 300 or some a new main to loop or to improve fire flow in the area. So you fully meet it. And that's to be 100%. You might be getting 60% right now. So you know, it's it's a level of of service. We we recommend that you start undertaking upgrades so that you can meet it. But it's not like, I mean, we're not talking about condition, we're we're talking about. You know, the sizing and and capacity.
So but this system has been in place for what 10, 15 years, 20 years?
Longer, probably, yep.
So realistically, it could last for another 10, 15 years if we wanted. If we didn't have the growth or the growth wasn't there. I understand some of the the valves and the hydrants and the demand if something went wrong. But this system we have now could last us another 10 years if we didn't touch it at the rate we're going.
Well, that price that we identified, the 13.4, 13.5 million are recommended upgrades to meet a criteria for now. It has nothing to do with expansion. So yes, if you if you did, if you weren't concerned about meeting those fire flow targets, I guess there wouldn't be upgrades. I guess there wouldn't be upgrades if you, if your goal is to meet those, those targets and that criteria, then that those recommended upgrades are to, to accommodate the existing condition. It have nothing to do with growth.
So and also my, my last two questions actually. Second question is obviously this is going to be increasing our utility rates for the homeowner, the business owner, whoever, because this is 13 million dollar upgrade over years. It's going to increase. Is this maybe as to administration? Is this upgrade on top, if we were to get a water treatment plant or a reservoir? This 13 million dollars because we're going into, because we're tying everything to water. Is this due to that, on top of that? Top of the reservoirs we want to build?
If I can jump in here, yeah, it would be, I, I believe so. So the system, the, the utility master plan looked at the pipe network system. Knowing that the flow coming from the water treatment plant, we didn't assess the transmission system coming in. So once the flow gets into the city and the, the pump stations there for central and garden meadows, it reviewed how your network itself is operating. So this would not be tied to any upgrades to the water treatment plant. Yeah, it's, it's more so the piping itself. So when we're looking at size upgrades, it's be like trying to push water through a small hose. And we're trying to increase that hose size. So no matter how much you're pushing, how much pressure you're pushing on that backside and to push those flows, you're only could push with so much pressure. You need to upsize that pipe or that hose to get the flows across or through to the next location. So yeah, unfortunately it would not be tied and I think it'd be added on to, to the water treatment plant cost.
Thank you. That's all I have.
For sure. Any other questions there?
My question is to Sue. Some, is my mic on?
Yeah.
Okay. My question is to Sue. Of these recommendations, my mic not on?
I can hear you.
Okay, fair enough. We've already started doing some of these. Is that correct? Like as far as the flushing and the inspecting of the valves and hydrants and things like that and replacing and dead looping?
Through the chair to council Billingsley, yes, we have started to do some of this preventative maintenance work that is probably identified within, the UMP is meant to, to give us both, I guess, some of those operational pieces, the current work that needs to be done. And then it looks a little bit at growth and what's required. So some of those things will be noted in there and we are doing them. Kathy's also in, currently reviewing utility operations and seeing what they can do to upgrade or enhance what they are doing to make sure that a lot of those preventative maintenance recommendations are being done.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. The first one, I guess, is in relation to, and maybe it's directed at administration. How, how do we, how do these reports feed into the budgeting process? In terms of, we've got a finite amount of months left before we get into budgeting. We've got some significant costs attached to these three reports. What do you folks do with them and bring forward as part of the budgeting process?
To the chair and all of council, the, this report is what helps feed our 10 year capital plan that comes forward to council each year. So now that the report is finalized, the engineering group will look at all of the data that's, that's in there and they will start to feed into the 10 year capital and bring it forward to council.
Okay. And then, and this maybe is part of, associated with Dean's question is that as, as we look to make upgrades, what are the implications of two statements that come out of this report? One is a conclusion states a concern that nearly all pressures fell within recommended range, which meant some did not. And then some locations did not meet peak day and fire flow criteria. And I know there's been lots of speaking today about the fire flow rates and so on. If we know that we have a areas that are deficient in pressure and/or don't meet fire flow criteria, does that put the city in any kind of extra liability with regard to fire activity and potential losses?
The city is always at risk of being sued, but we are not obligated to actually provide complete fire protection as part of our bylaw. What administration will do, Kathy and her team will sit down and go through and look at all of the work that needs to be done and they'll prioritize based on what they believe is most important. A lot of the other projects that we're doing too will tie into some of this stuff. So like the water looping project helps with the fire flows and, and those sorts of things. And so if there's an area that is a little bit deficient or isn't meeting it all the time, they'll review that with associated and then come up with a prioritization list. And, and that's what submitted to council.
Thank you. My last question then, and again, this, this speaks to the issues regarding potential deficiencies with hydrants. And we've had conversations about looping out on the south end of town. This addresses looping issues and all the rest of it?
I'd actually have to defer to Paul or staff. I didn't read the final report, but I, I know looping is part of what we're doing right now.
So this will deal with it or we are dealing with it separately now?
Paul, was it in your report?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Candace.
I was just going to say throughout the city, there are locations where we would have identified proposed loops in order to help improve fire flow deficiencies.
Definitely. If there's, yeah, if the, the opportunity to lose something to get that flow up to where it needs to be and then to touch back on another question is, you know, get to that, that flow to the level of service the city has, has set out as their parameter to achieve, that then yeah, looping is a great alternative than replacing mains, especially if they still have a lot of life left in them. So yeah, looping is something I always considered. And then with regards to the hydrant coverage, yeah, if you can tie something in to get the flow to, to a hydrant or even put a hydrant on the existing line there that to provide that support. Because the, the, you know, the main may be there, there may not be a draw point from that location. Then yeah, those are great options, then replacing existing infrastructure.
Great. Thank you. We'll turn it back to you to take us through page number two, the report number two.
Perfect. And I will just jump in one quick, quick note and it's going to segue into the sanitary system a little bit that we, we kind of hopped over on the water or skimmed a bit. I wanted to just draw attention to was that the water consumption was really something that working with the city and looking at the data, reviewing the numbers is it came down to that 300. And this is a number, it is important because it used to be a lot higher. So what, one of my opinions is why the, the system is performing so well right now is that there, there's been a great emphasis on water consciousness and, and usage. And all that has come down and therefore we can actually bring down that water consumption rate. So your system, which may have looked to be a little bit fear short at the start because of the growth is actually because of water consciousness, we're using a lot less water. And that's why the system is performing so well. And that's going to actually come into importance when we talk about the sanitary system as well. But it's, it's something that, that's really helping these systems move forward. So. So yeah, sorry, back to storm now, which has nothing to do with the water we drink. But yeah, I'll let Laurel talk about that one.
Sure. Thanks, Paul. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Laurel. Like I said, we're going to start with storm. So again, I'll just highlight some really key points of design criteria in terms of the storm system, which mostly deals with rain. So in the municipal engineering guidelines, we are using currently an old intensity duration frequency data. And that is something that EPCOR updated in 2018 for the greater city of Edmonton area. So we recommended as part of this project to incorporate those 2018 intensity duration frequency datum into the municipal engineering standards. And that's the level and, and data basically we input as part of all of our analyses for both storm and sanitary. Now for a storm system, typically there are both minor and major systems within the overall storm system. So really high level, the minor system includes pipes, manholes, catch basins, outfalls, lots of underground systems in, in terms of minor. And that takes usually a lower designed storm event. So typically and in the municipal engineering standards, the minor system is designed for a one in five year design storm event. And this means that that storm event has about a one in 20% chance of happening every single year. So then we also have a major system and part of that major system is roadways where overland runoff can flow along the surface. It includes storage, so ponds, both dry and wet, any overland runoff basically. And that is designed typically to handle in addition to your minor system, that one in 100 year design storm event. And this storm event has a 1% chance of happening every single year. So it is quite an intense, a large storm event, but it, we do have a chance of seeing that every single year. So associated engineering actually developed a 1D, 2D coupled model for both the minor and major storm system. And that just means that we are both assessing what's going on underground in our minor system pipes as well as when that water reaches the surface, both from rain or from surcharging above ground from pipes. We're taking a look at where we see ponding, where we see flow. So we actually completed flow monitoring within the city's storm system in 2019. That consisted of five flow monitors and two rain gauges. And all of that data that we collected was fed into that model that we developed and use for calibration and validation purposes. We calibrated the different land use, just as Candace was mentioning with water. The different land uses have different roughness and so water will either flow faster, especially if it's a paved surface or slower along parks and grassy areas. So we did actually see a 10 year event during the 2019 monitoring program. And so that has a 10% chance of occurring each year. So we were lucky to see that large event. And I will get into that once we start looking at the model results. But we found that the model was a very good representation of realistic conditions during that event. So we are quite confident in model results, which I will get into next. Oh, sorry, just a snapshot, what, what the city's system actually looks like here. So all of the little circles represent manhole locations within the city. The difference in colors is just the previous model and then bringing that up to 2020 conditions. We've got red triangles representing outfalls into the ditch networks within the city. So there are three major ditches which I will touch on in the next slide. And we've also got the pipes shown here. So minor system. And then major system, in addition to streets and overland flows, that includes major ditch networks. So we've got the north central ditch, which is the pink line going through the north part of the city. We've got the south ditch, which is the discontinuous orange line on the south side of the city. And we've also got a north diversion ditch, which actually allows flows from Wataasquon County, west of the city to bypass the city so that it's not going through any of the city's storm system or even the north central ditch. There are a number of culverts along all of the ditch networks. And we actually found that there is a control gate that allows the confluence between the north diversion ditch and the north central ditch to be interconnected. When we visited in 2019, that control gate was closed. We have assumed that that control gate is closed in all of our model simulations. And we would recommend that it always does stay closed so that these large areas can be diverted around the city. To give you an idea of how big of an area comes through, this is a delineation we've done based on some course LIDAR of Wataasquon County. And that's approximately 90 square kilometers of area, that large purple, purple catchment on the west side. So we want to divert that around the city. All of the ditch networks eventually make their way into Pipestone Creek through tributaries. And now I'll get into our model results. So I've broken things up for the minor system in terms of manhole surcharge and pipe capacity. So this is showing our manhole surcharging within the city. This is during a two year design storm event. So that's a very frequent storm event that we would see over a summer. So green circles show where our hydraulic grade line or the water level is greater than two meters below surface level. Once we have orange dots that shows where the hydraulic grade line or water level is within that two meter buffer of the ground elevation. So if we do have any direct connections, storm connections into people's homes, that's representing a risk of basement backup potentially. And then where we do see red circles, which we don't have many on this map, that represents where surcharge is actually, the water level is reaching the ground elevation and spilling out onto the surface. And we can also see in the background, there is surface ponding shown and that's based on our 2D model simulation. So it's showing certainly water within the lake, water within the ditch networks within the city. But ultimately, we don't have a lot of surcharge to ground during this two year event. If I flip over to the pipes, green pipes show where we have capacity. So the water level would be below pipe crown at those locations. And red pipes are just showing where pipes are flowing full. So the water level is above pipe crown, not necessarily reaching ground level. We look at, at both of those results together to determine that. So from this, we can see that certainly within the downtown core and, and Paul mentioned this right off the bat, we do see our pipes flowing full. And that points towards previous designs only being sized to convey that one and two or even one in one year design storm event. So that, that is what typically designs were built to in the past. And then we can see as the city has been built out, that design standard level of service has been increased. And yeah, that's, that's just what we're seeing. So if we do flip now to the existing level of service in the municipal engineering standard for the five year storm event, those results are changing a little bit. We are seeing more surcharging to ground. So a lot more red manholes. And where things were green, maybe on the extent of the city outside of that downtown area, we are seeing that water level rising within that two meter buffer. And looking at pipes, then we can see a lot more pipes are flowing at capacity under these conditions. And we always want to look at that 100 year event. So we've got that 1% chance of this occurring every single year. And I guess results really speak for themselves. So this, this represents quite catastrophic flooding. There is risk of private property flooding, public property flooding. We can see that there is backup from the ditch networks, both the north, central and south ditches are showing surcharge above banks. Lots of our manholes are surcharging to ground because it, they're just not, I guess, sized for, for adequate design storm events. When we do look at the pipes, as predicted, the pipes are flowing full, which we would expect with the 100 year event. But we are seeing quite a bit of ponding above surface during this event. So in order to address some major concerns based on that 10 year event that occurred in 2019, what we did in, in consultation with the city is propose several upgrades of pipe upsizing, mostly concentrated within the downtown core to address results where during a five year, four hour design storm event, so this has a 20% chance of occurring every single year. If we upsize the pipes, we can mitigate that surcharging above ground. So we are not able to completely eliminate it. We don't want to upsize every single pipe in the city, but if we upsize a few key locations, we can reduce that flooding so that we are lessening the risk of private property flooding and trying to confine that flooding to within a roadway. So I have a few locations. So I have a few locations that you can see highlighted on this slide. If we move forward, you can see in all locations, we're not one hundred percent eliminating that flooding, but conditions are getting a lot better. So left hand side of all the pictures would be existing conditions. And right hand side would be with those upgrades in place. So, for example, on the top left at forty eighth Avenue, between forty seven A and forty eight Streets, we're seeing that with those pipe upgrades in place, the surcharge above ground is at least confined within our roadway during this event. And again, this is the five year four hour design storm event, twenty percent chance that this happens every single year. So for upgrades, I used the same plans that Candace presented. Thank you, Candace, in the Water U M P for both storm and sanitary. So what we can see here is the same plan with that stage one, two, three, and ultimate development. And this is our proposed ultimate servicing concept. So where available, we have incorporated area structure plans that have been accepted. We've got a number of proposed stormwater management facility ponds proposed. All systems do discharge into the ditch networks. So we've also recommended that some ditch modification and maintenance is done as well as installation of backflow prevention valves on outfalls. So that if we do have high water levels within the ditch networks, we're not seeing that backup and affect the city's storm, minor storm pipe system. Yeah, so this this is our proposed concept. In terms of cost estimates, we've included estimates to bring conditions up to as much as or as close as possible to that existing five year level of service for the minor system. So we've got ditch network modification at about six point five million dollars. And then upsizing pipes for locations was broken down into three sort of systems for a total of about twenty eight million dollars. And this should be completed when budgets allow. However, as we see climate change increasing, potentially the intensity and frequency of rain events, this could start exacerbating issues within the city. So we've also recommended an emergency response plan be developed that includes lessons learned from that twenty nineteen event. Sandbagging is always an option, just so you can reduce the risk of property damage as much as possible. So in conclusion, the storm system was not assessed for condition. It was a capacity assessment that was conducted. So we've assumed all pipes are completely round, no debris accumulation, so they can flow free. We did complete flow monitoring and we calibrated and validated our model with that, as well as with anecdotal data from that ten year twenty nineteen event. So we have a good representation of existing conditions. We found that the minor storm system provides most likely a one to two year level of service. And the existing ditch network currently causes some backup into the city's minor system. So we did recommend that CCTV inspection of the minor system be completed, so we can make sure that pipes are in good condition and sort of focus on fixing those ones first. We always recommend a continuous flow monitoring program so that your models can continue to be calibrated and validated and refined as additional information or works are completed within the city. We would recommend development and implementation of a ditch network maintenance program and development of an emergency response plan. And drainage should always be coordinated with Wataasquon County, as there there is definitely connections between the two. So that is everything I have for storm. And at this time, I would love to answer any questions anyone has.
House of Broncos.
Thank you, the Chair, to Laurel. When we do these upgrades and you're doing some repairs or you do your scans, are we utilizing the biggest pipe when we remove the old one? Are we putting back the same, so the pressures to equal the same? Should we go bigger while we're there digging it up or?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. So, um, sorry, Tindray.
So what I'm saying is if we go bigger, are we going to do more damage because of the pressure that we're going to create? Like a piston pushing through a little? Also, when we're doing these upgrades, say a couple of street blocks, we're not changing the size of it to hold more capacity. But down the road, it causes more more damage if we did that because the existing that we're tying into is smaller.
Yes, so this this is a really great point. So the storm system actually does not flow under pressure, similar to water. It's actually gravity flow. So there is air within the pipes. So you're not creating so much of a, yeah, piston water gushing action. But you're very right. If you do upsize pipes on the upstream end of the system and the downstream does not have capacity, you're just moving your problem downstream. So I would say whenever works are proposed to be completed, we would want to look and and get the engineering department to look into that entire system in more detail and see if it would be beneficial to increase pipe sizes to the downstream, to to that outfall, if that would eliminate or or mitigate surcharging above ground. You can do some storage, both inline or offline. We could have a large pipe that is then controlled with a smaller pipe, so that you're not providing or conveying flows to the downstream system more than it can handle. But definitely, it would be a case by case basis, and we would need to look at those locations in more detail.
So is there is there a possibility that if we go with this bigger pipes, whatever, that we may be rectifying what we did two years ago, say on one street, we already repaved and done underground? And in order to get it properly flowing, we'd have to tear that apart again or just going to tie in? Because if we plan on to rebuild, to make it right, some of the stuff we put in two years ago could be obsolete. And is there the possibility of pipe bursting to put these bigger pipes underground?
I think I defer to Paul for that question. I think so.
No, for for sure. I can I can take this with Laurel. So, no, great question. And a big appreciation for the pipe bursting, especially some trenchless stuff. But yeah, to to full circle back to the original question and then follow up with the second one is when you're upsizing the pipes, we can, you can, you can upsize as as much as you'd like to. And it it won't have that a negative impact on the downstream system. Essentially, if the pipe is too small downstream, it'll essentially cause a constraint and backup or store into the larger pipe you placed in. And that's actually a tactic we have used in the past where you you put it, what we call inline storage. So an oversized pipe to store that flow, so instead of surfacing, it's it fills that pipe. So as Laurel was saying, you would look at each location that you would like to upgrade specifically and and develop those options, whether it's going to be upsize the entire thing or put in one larger pipe or a single segment. The downfall with upsizing it to answer the rest of the question is, should we just put in larger, larger pipes? At a certain point, the pipe will not be used anymore because you'll be maxed out of how much flow will be going through there if you're looking at the ultimate plan. And then it just becomes economical. Larger pipes cost more material and more to install. And the fittings are more expensive. So as you get to, let's say you need a six hundred millimeter diameter pipe, and you say, let's put in a twelve hundred because then we're super robust. You may never ever use that, and it's increasing the cost of all those components there. So, yeah, I agree. I've always for upsizing a little bit and putting in something that, you know, that allows you for future development that you may not have planned for. But at the same time, being economical in that decision is very important because you don't want to have just giant pipes through your hoses and that will never be used, and it was a waste of dollar value to tie back into stuff that has already been put into place. I hate ripping up fresh asphalt that was paved or replacing infrastructure that was just put in as well. So I I'd say again, looking at those specific situations, or if something was put into place and it, let's say, it needed to be upsized or it's part of that whole connection, taking a look at that one specifically and designing a a solution that's going to work with what's in place, there is always an option, right? Whether you oversize the one pipe to store whatever flow would be in the second pipe or if that would be accommodated or not. For pipe bursting itself, doable, but as you start sanitary and water lines are usually smaller diameter, when you get to storm, some of these pipes can get fairly large. As you get into that large rehab, especially in the trenchless world, it becomes very expensive. And then you almost have to weigh the pros and the cons, cost effective to do a trenchless solution versus surface restoration. So that that's kind of a way out. If you're replacing, you know, a four fifty millimeter pipe with a seven hundred or seven fifty millimeter pipe and that large of an upsize, one, the the, not to get too technical, the pressures when you're bursting might wreck the surface anyways. So that's one thing that would have to be calculated or checked on quickly. And the other one is that the size of equipment and holes for all that. For typically in a city, there are small sections or small segments. It may not be worth it. It might be worth just ripping open that rodum and switching out that piece of pipe. So all those kind of play into factor at each specific location.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one, and it's in it's in relation to your diversion ditch. So when you had your major storm that you were able to model off of, did you take flow rates on our ditches in into account? So, for example, do we know flow rates on the diversion ditch? And how much water are moving that way that would have otherwise come through our community?
Thanks very much. That's a fabulous question. So due to the level of this being, looking at the full city, we don't have detailed estimates within the ditches and especially at the diversion ditch. So it's definitely something that can be looked into with the model, but it would require some refinement in order to obtain a confident flow value at that location.
Then to pick up from that, then is there a way, and I'm sure there is from a from a engineering perspective, to determine how much wastewater, surface waters coming into our community from the surrounding rural community?
So we we have a good estimate, but that is based on LiDAR data and additional model simulations. So the surrounding county areas do include some sort of pot and kettle terrain, we like to call it. So it it would hold some water back in depressions within the topography. And they would make their way to the city slowly or maybe evaporate, depending on the size of that storm event. So I guess in answer to the question, we we have an estimate, and that has all been included in the model that we've provided for the city. But in order to have a really confident, like numerical value, we would probably want some additional refinement of those estimates, if that makes sense.
I think just to touch on that, Laurel can can correct me here because I'll probably speak a little bit out. But for the, I guess, to touch the ditch itself, to to model that, we actually surveyed out the ditches. And we we built that into the survey, what we had, or into the model, what we had surveyed out. But we were limited on how many flow locations we can monitor. So we did put that, and that's where Laurel's note of continuous flow monitoring and a rotational plan would be a fantastic asset to the city. As for the the flow for coming from the county now focused, because everything for the most part flows from west to east, the majority of the county flows to the the northwest corner of the city where it hits that diversion ditch. And Laurel will have to correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the diversion ditch moves majority, if not all, the flow around the city, so that the county flow is not pushing through on the north side. Correct? Yes, I'm getting a nod. Yes, awesome. And then for Ish, okay, I'm kind of close here. And then the rest on the south side, there is a small, smaller catchment from the county that comes down. And it actually ties into behind the the Walmart location to some some ponds there. And then it makes its way through that south ditch going that way. So, yeah, there we go. There's a little catchment. You can see it's all delineated by a bit of a darker pink line, but that goes through that south ditch. The rest going up through the north ditch or diverting around because of that. So most of the flow, hopefully pushing around the city, only a little bit would actually be making it through the city system. Should that diversion ditch not be there, it would have been a absolute disaster, in my opinion.
Thank you. And then my last question is to administration, and the recommendation coming from the report talks about keeping the the control gate closed. And anytime I've been out there, it's it's been closed. But like, how old is it? Does it need maintenance? Is it up to date? Can it do what it needs to do?
To the Chair and all of Council, that's partially what I was going to speak to. I think one of the things we have to remember when we're looking at utility modeling is that it's a model in a perfect world. And they try to take into account a lot of the the realities that we have in our community. But the reality is that we quite often open up that valve to the central ditch, which is why we are experiencing some of the issues that we have. We shouldn't, but there have been issues created on the west side of the city with drainage, that if we do not open up that ditch, we will be flooding everybody. So AEP doesn't want us to open it. The models don't want us to open it. And we're working towards not having to open it. But part of that is that bigger discussion that we're having with the county right now and trying to get that next step, that that next report that Paul's talking about, in getting the real data to find out exactly what the issue is and how we can mitigate it.
So we'll turn it back to you for chapter three.
Awesome. All right. So sanitary system, then. Again, just similar to water and storm, I've pulled out a few key design criteria from the municipal engineering standards. So similar to what Candace mentioned off the top, we've got different land use zones, which equates to a different number of people within each different land use type who generate sanitary flows. Now, within the sanitary system, it's it's all just pipes underground. However, we do have two different types of flow. So we have what's called a dry weather flow, which is our base case. That's taking whatever goes down the drain, so showers, toilets, sinks, that's our dry weather flow. You're always seeing that. We also have wet weather flow, which does not occur all the time, but it will occur when we do have a rain event. It it consists of inflow and infiltration into the mine, or, yeah, the the sanitary system, the pipes. So that can come through leaky joints, through manhole lids, groundwater infiltration, that sort of thing. So that is again dependent on a design storm event, and some proportion of that event will make its way into the sanitary system. I know, or in in reading previous reports, weeping tile direct connections were practiced within the city. So that's going to be a quick response of additional water entering the sanitary system. Anytime we we do have that rainfall event. So we take all of that into account. Again, we we have an average sewage generation rate, which takes into account the base flow. The number three hundred and twenty, which I've I've got showing up on the screen here, is from the municipal engineering standards. Similar to the water system, we did find that with calibrated flows based on flow monitoring that we conducted, that is actually a lot lower for all of the existing development within the city. However, we would always say, or and recommend to use this value when sizing new pipes. That way that you, you're slightly oversizing the pipes. But with climate change, this is going to provide a conservative estimate. A couple other generation rates for different land use types, so commercial, industrial. And as I mentioned, we completed flow monitoring during the twenty twenty season. This was used to calibrate and validate the model, both for dry weather and wet weather events. So we looked at time periods where there was no rainfall, as well as time periods where there was rainfall. We took the existing city's model and we brought that up to twenty twenty conditions. So adding any pipes that had been put into the ground or upsized, what have you. And we did run that model for a suite of design events. So once that was calibrated, we made sure that we had results for dry weather flows. We had results for anywhere from a five year event all the way up to that same hundred year event. So twenty percent chance of happening each year to one percent happening each year. So I won't bore you with a lot of So I won't bore you with a lot of maps that look exactly the same. I'm just going to jump to the end. Uh, so this is um the model results for the hundred year four hour design storm event. Um, quite big, but we're seeing the response within the system is is very good. We're not seeing any locations where there is surcharging to ground, thank goodness, because you really don't want sanitary flows reaching ground level. Um, we see for the most part our green circles uh representing manholes where the hydraulic grade line or water level is. Greater than in this case, two point five meters below ground. Again, when we're within that zero to two point five meter level uh orange circles. That's sort of within that risk level where basement backups could occur. Uh, and as Paul mentioned previously, there are quite shallow grades within the city. Uh, so we do have a number of manholes within the downtown core, especially that are less than two point five meters deep. So um that that level of risk always exists at that location. There's no way that we can reduce the the water level below that level. Um, it is what it is. Uh, but um for the most part, the system is responding very well. We do have some capacity limitations again within the downtown core. But for the most part, um, the system is very close to a one hundred year level of service. So in order to reduce uh those capacity limitations uh in in certain locations within the city. Uh, as well as locations where we have very shallow pipe grades or back graded pipes even. We have proposed several upgrades uh for existing conditions that bring the system right up to that hundred year level of service. Um, so you can see here, we've got uh just the locations highlighted with pink, blue, purple, yellow. Um, and uh I I believe the pink location in the north is uh. Under design right now. So um again, these these should be completed as projects occur and when budgets allow. Um, they will just bring your system up to the next level, gold star and um. Yeah, ju- just as climate change is making these storm events more frequent, uh it's it's another uh reduction of risk there. And then I'm just going to jump to the ultimate system again, same staging plan for stage one, two, three and ultimate growth. Uh, again, where area structure plans have been accepted, we've sort of compiled all of those proposed uh piping here. And then we have some very conceptual high level um pipe servicing shown uh with dotted lines here. Uh, again, there are some upgrades that will be required to service this future growth. Uh, so we've got green highlighted pipes in the Aspen Ridge neighborhood in the north of the city. Um, which will be required to service stage one growth. There will need to be some upgrades to the garden meadows trunk um to service stage two growth. As well as a a few upgrades located in the west side of the city uh for any ultimate development. Um, I'm realizing now I didn't even explain what the sanitary system was. So let me just give you an overview at the end here. Uh, so sanitary system pipes uh all flow again from. West to the east where uh at the end of the line, we've got the wastewater lagoons in the northeast. Um, there are three lift stations located within the city. There's the most S and L station close to downtown. There's the northeast list station in the northeast, which uh pumps approximately two thirds. Of the city's wastewater into the lagoons. And then uh we've got uh the southeast of station, which takes the fortieth avenue trunk, which runs all the way from the Reynolds Alberta Museum. Along the south boundary of the city uh and pumps the remaining third uh of sanitary flows into the wastewater lagoons. So for ultimate development, we do recommend that that some additional pumping capacity assessments are completed for both lift stations. Based on our calculations, the northeast list station will require some upgrades for stage one development. And I know uh we have a project going on right now where that lift station is uh being assessed in further detail. And as well, the southeast of station, once we get all of our ultimate development, will most likely required some pumping upgrades as well. So moving on to our high level cost estimates, um upgrades to the existing system. So those uh four locations will require approximately seven million dollars. And then we've required some upgrades to existing for both stage one and stage two developments. Um, once ultimate development comes online, some additional upgrades will be required for a total cost of about fourteen million dollars. Um, adding that all together, twenty one point six million dollars. Uh, but again, this should occur when budgets allow on a synergy that synergistic basis. I don't know if that's a word. But a- as synergies uh come up. So in conclusion, sanitary was also not a condition assessment. It was an assessment of capacity of the pipes, again, assuming they're all perfectly round, perfectly free of debris. Um, our model was calibrated and validated with twenty twenty flow data. We did not uh find that um during the twenty twenty season, there there was no ten year event. Uh, so the largest event we had was a five year event, which again has a twenty percent chance of happening every year. So um despite always recommending full monitoring, there's no guarantee that you will get those those big events every year. But it's it's great to have the data regardless. Um, and you can always be using that to uh continually refine the calibration. And validation of the model. We recommend that the model be um. I will get to that in a second, actually. The sanitary system provides uh close to one hundred year levels of service already uh for existing. And additional pumping capacity will most likely be required for the northeast and southeast lift stations for future development. And so now I would always recommend continuous flow monitoring programs uh so that you can keep your models up to date. I uh with any additional works that are completed within the city as well. Uh, all recommended upgrades will require some refinement in preliminary and detailed design. Um, and I've talked about those list stations uh a lot. So uh that is sanitary. And if there are any questions about that, I would also be happy to answer them.
And who has more fun than sanitary? So are there any questions on the topic of sanitary? Hearing none, I guess uh it's my job to thank all three of you for your presentation today and enlightening us. And there may be more questions coming in the future as we uh deliberate all the uh options you put before us. And Andrew, if you want to close.
Sure, I'll just say uh from my part, I'm very excited to have a report like this in place. So that we can uh make really educated decisions as we go forward. So thank you so much to uh Paul and Candace and Laurel. Um, your work uh has been amazing so far and I'm really sort of excited to be putting this in place.
Perfect. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you for uh mayor and council for listening and uh engaging and asking questions. It's it's obviously something we're passionate about. We we overran our time, I apologize, but we uh we're excited to hear the feedback. And then just it generally shows that you guys were not only paying attention, but interested in the system. So we we it it's fun to engage in that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, item number three, division reports, enforcement services by annual report. Alright, good afternoon, Mayor Johnson. Well, thank you. You hear me now? I'll be presenting the enforcement services by another port and highlighting our operations as well as services provided to the city with task one. Next slide. So currently, our department has full five time uh full time employees and we've had addition of two temporary positions. So currently out of those. Out of those five ti- full time employees, we employ two community peace officers level one. One of those positions currently acting as the manager as well as supervisor, training officer for the department as well as responding to general operations. The second CPO one is just in his role as a general operations and enforcement for the city. Our community level peace officer two and full time bylaw sir are currently enforcing general operations. As far as provincial statutes and municipal enforcement with our two remaining temporary employees. Just focusing on municipal enforcement within the city of Wataas until the end of December twenty twenty one. Next slide. So currently the services that we provide to the city with task win is obviously municipal enforcement, animal control. Conventional traffic enforcement, automated traffic enforcement, commercial vehicle enforcement, public engagement. Assist requests, emergency response, and we provide training both internal and external. Next slide. So this slide here is just to give you an overview over the years. Um, starting with two thousand sixteen, uh this is the total file load slash incident reporting that municipal and service uh enforcement services is currently dealing with. We've had a steady increase from two thousand sixteen through to two thousand twenty um with a decrease shown in twenty twenty one. And the reason for this decrease is that it's only showing until June thirtieth. So this is only a six month um file load graph showing that we're only three hundred files behind. Twenty twenty at a six month period. Next slide. So for municipal enforcement, we've had a gradual increase from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Uh, with the change in program, we were able to better account for the files and time that we're spending for municipal enforcement. We've had a steady file load from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. We had a gradual decrease in twenty twenty one and that is related to the COVID restrictions. We had less complaints with people being home, taking care of their properties and whatnot for that. And as of June thirtieth, we had, we're at nine hundred and sixty seven, so we're about a hundred and twenty or so off the mark from the year before previous. Next slide here. So for breaking up uh for the various services that we provided. I've categorized it by investigative files. So those files are what our officers require extensive investigation. As far as issuing compliance notices, obtaining court orders and extensive follow up. Non investigative files are files that our officers can either deal with on the phone or in person at the time of the complaint. And can gain compliance there and then. And then as well as we do issue tickets as part of our enforcement duties um on top of our compliance orders. So animal control, uh we've kind of seen a basically a plateau. We have a pretty steady animal control workload. Um, again, in twenty twenty one, it's just a drastic drop is due to only reporting till June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. Next slide. So for our investigative files, uh they remain pretty consistent uh throughout the years. Um, obviously, with some of that stuff, we cannot control, obviously dogs at large, stuff like that. Um, our non investigative files, we're trying to drop them and that is attributed to our communications department assisting us in getting the word out there as far as licensing. Responsible pet ownership and other campaigns like that. And as far as our tickets go, we're had a high volume of tickets in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. That was just because we had a lot of compliance issues through the excellent work of our communications department and our officers. We managed to get some public education out there, which has dropped the need for uh the issuance of tickets. Next slide. For conventional traffic enforcement, we had a steady increase in twenty sixteen as we had. Addition of an officer that could do traffic enforcement with twenty seventeen, another officer coming online uh for conventional traffic enforcement. We had a steady drop from twenty seventeen down to twenty nineteen. Uh, this is in relation due to. Both one of the officers being retasked to do administrative work as well as in twenty nineteen, uh one officer, experienced officer left. Uh, leaving us to hire another inexperienced uh member to do import, do traffic enforcement. As well as the COVID restrictions led to another restriction. This will be, didn't have a much contact unless it was a serious offense. As far as the investigative files, those are pretty steady as far as being about running about a hundred. And those are related to any enforcement that we do for suspended drivers, impaired drivers that stop. It does involve us going into an investigative file to uh link it up with the RCMP as far as assisting them. And then our non investigative files, most of those are based on our traffic complaints. Uh, we'll get traffic complaints of speeding in the area. Obviously, there's nothing to investigate because they'll just give us descriptions and not much of platoon for us to follow up on. So this or we just do a non investigative file and just make a BOLO to make patrols in the area. Next slide. So assist request, this one has steadily had an increase from twenty sixteen uh through to twenty twenty. And this is basically requests uh either from RCMP, fire services in the way of traffic controller, crowd control. Another rise we've seen uh especially in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty is the public being quite educated. Um, and also some offloading from the RCMP that way we can deal with some of the files that are non criminal in nature. Um, and we can assist them in looking at suspicious people's vehicles. Because our CPO ones are uh trained and have the use of CPIC and uh roads, which is the vehicle access data system. To assist in some of those um concerns from the public. Next slide. So yeah, so here's our breakdown of the actual assist files, as you can see, like from twenty eighteen to nineteen and and through to twenty. We've had a drastic increase of assisting both RCMP, fire, CP police and citizens of Wataas. When in regards to the requests, those again are those are patrol quests that we've had from the various community members saying they want patrols in the area. So whether it's residential area, downtown, some of our commercial areas, we've had those requests. And then for the BOLOs, those are all safety. Um, we rise to, we have intelligence reports from the RCMP. Or from various other organizations, uh we put those in as officer safety, uh missing people um as well as missing animals. Personal vehicle enforcement is another duty that we perform. We've had a steady increase in twenty sixteen seventeen from seventeen. Based with one officer being trained in commercial vehicle enforcement. Second officer was trained in twenty eighteen, so we had some more increase in commercial vehicle stops. Um, but we've actually seen now a decrease in twenty nineteen with again, one officer leaving that was commercial vehicle enforcement trained. As well as one of the CPO ones that we currently have is now being assigned administrative duties there for not being on the road as much to uh stop our commercial vehicles. And have them checked out for safety compliance issues. Automated traffic enforcement in twenty sixteen, uh we had a contractor global traffic group. They were in charge of doing all of the traffic and automated traffic enforcement as far as mobile photo radar. In twenty seventeen, we took over the program in house and partnered with Breckford at that time to provide us the processing. Component of automated traffic enforcement, so that we had good success with twenty seventeen eighteen. In twenty nineteen, we had to end the contract with Breckford, which led us to go seek another contracted partner with as far as processing goes. We were able to get that completed by the end of nineteen with the implementation of the program in twenty twenty again, starting up with Red Flex Traffic Group. Which was started out with our mobile unit uh which started some success. And then in twenty twenty one, we're now seeing the addition of our intersection safety devices with the one at fortieth Ave and fifty sixth street southbound. Uh, having some good success as far as red light and speeding infractions, as well as we'll be adding the fortieth Ave and fifty third street here shortly. To the online system as well as fifty six streets and fifty five. Through our daily duties, we have public engagement. So in twenty sixteen and seventeen, we had our positive ticket program, which has had great success. We had some reduction in twenty eighteen due to again officer time being delegated elsewhere for calls for service. Um, nineteen and twenty, again, we had very little positive ticket interaction due to the COVID restrictions as well as twenty twenty one. We've had very little interaction just due to COVID. Our public education program was fairly steady through twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And twenty twenty as well as twenty twenty one, which is in regards to our school visits and participation in some events. Um, public relations, we had fairly steady over the twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, based on our positive interactions and our proactive patrols, we were invited to a lot more public events for twenty twenty, uh which our officers were able to attend. And in twenty twenty one, we're just reporting for six months so far. We also through the partnership uh with the RCMP uh implemented a SEPTED inspection program in twenty twenty. Um, and basically what that is, is a fact crime prevention through environmental design will do inspections both at the RCMP request. As well as if business owners themselves want us to come out and do a crime prevention inspection. So we're seeing some rise in that and hopefully we'll have some success uh in regards to uh curbing some crime here in the city with task one. As well as in twenty twenty one, we've implemented implemented a dedicated school patrol program. So our officers actually are getting out there in vehicles and on foot um to various schools to help curb some of the issues that the schools are having. In regards to vehicle driving habits, pedestrians and whatnot. Next slide. Next slide. So emergency response, um, we have two officer, our CPO ones are both trained in emergency response, and this basically resulting from a nine one one call um, that requires attendance, so this is basically for the our our CPOs. It'll be vehicle collisions as well as structure fires and alarms at high risk buildings such as the hospital, uh, retirement homes, condos. Next slide. This is a recap for the downtown reporting. Uh, this was done from January first to June thirtieth. Actually, no, sorry, correction, uh, August, as far as our investigative files were at three hundred and twenty four for the downtown core, so that is that three block radius uh, corridor. We had eight non-investigative files, one emergency response. We issued fourteen tickets and then performed a hundred and eighty four foot patrols as well as two hundred and five vehicle patrols. Next slide. First department updates go, um, as I explained earlier, our AT, we saw the inflammation of our intersection safety devices at first one was going live at fortieth Ave and fifty sixth street southbound. We're seeing obviously a great success for us, but we are noticing quite a lot of red light infractions as well as uh, speed on green as well as speed through any other um, infraction as well. What I've been noticing, because I've been reviewing these files, is a lot of people are speeding to beat the yellow. So that yellow light turns on, they actually hammer on the gas, we'll be doing at least sixteen over uh, to get a photo from our uh, camera system there. With the second one now, it's actually in testing phase. I've been had a meeting with Red Flex this morning, that our second location on fortieth Ave and fifty third street going eastbound will be live probably in two weeks. So we'll be issuing tickets uh, at that location. And through my general patrols, the city, I see that our uh, with the intersection upgrade at fifty and fifty sixth street, that third location actually cameras gone up, so hopefully that will be going through a testing phase in the next month or so, and we can actually put that system live in that location. Another mention is that as far as capital products go, we were granted the purchase of a new patrol vehicle that has been delivered and it was up at Megatec and should actually be ready for service, actually at the end of this week, you'll see a new patrol vehicle uh, for enforcement services out there. Next slide. Any questions?
Through the chair to Trent, um, you were saying these photos, so they're when they're up and running and somebody speeds through a green light, will be tipping them too, or just red light fractions?
No, it tickets if they're on a green light and they speed through, it operates as.
So everything, anything that's in a fraction going through that light, it registers it.
Yeah, so an example being you can speed through a red light and get two tickets, one for the red light and one for speeding.
Oh, really? And and when will this take effect?
So yeah, so you're talking when they take, so that first intersection device has been live now probably for I'd say about four months now.
That's on fortieth.
That's on fortieth, um, with my review of the tickets, because I do the final review on them, we're seeing, I'd say on average right now, per month, we're doing probably about a hundred plus tickets a month of that one site.
Really?
Yeah, going one direction.
See, I'm not concerned, I don't have a ticket yet, so.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Trent through the chair. Um, in your downtown reporting, you uh, stated that there was fourteen tickets issued.
Yes.
Through those eight months. Can you elaborate exactly what type of tickets would be written up during that time?
Uh, so for that one, most of the tickets um, were for different like uh, you're dating in public for definition in public, uh, we wrote the odd ticket um, for open liquor, um, but based obviously on our experience. There if they're intoxicated, dumping out their liquor was a more effective than issuing it to you because they aren't going to pay that ticket regardless, but.
So when you did dispose of liquor, is that recorded anywhere or is it just?
No, it's, so we recorded as an incident, so we dealt with it, that's an incident reported, so.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Chair through Trent, uh, couple questions. Commercial vehicle, we years ago, we spent a fortune buying weigh scales and a truck, and so we are not doing that now because we don't have anybody qualified.
So yeah, I am qualified, but unfortunately due to me having to be retasked to administrative duties, I now spend less time, I have less time to go out and do joint force operations as well as just be on my own outweighing trucks and doing inspections.
Okay, so just sit in the corner collecting dust.
We are, we are attempting to train.
Okay.
A second officer, but at this point due to COVID restrictions, those training programs.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Do you have, are you assisting highway patrol when you're doing their check stops on by the golf course or across by the?
Yeah, we do perform, yeah, what we call joint force operation, so yes, we do get invites. Um, if we have officers available, we do participate in those. And then, uh, but if we don't have anyone available, unfortunately, we don't participate.
So since we don't have a commercial inspection when vehicles are overweight or, you know, is highway patrol have the jurisdiction to come into our community or they stay on government highways?
No, so we have a good partnership working relationship with, uh, used to called commercial vehicle enforcement, they now been rebranded sheriffs. But yes, they have full authority to come into the city if they see any infraction, then they're good about giving us a call too if they're in the area, so.
Is the county peace officer or fine officer allowed to come into our jurisdiction and give tickets to local?
No, we did try to write that into, an example, we tried to write a MOU for Millet and us. Um, at that time, uh, council just tabled that for now.
Okay, and and my last question, uh, you have the files here in downtown reporting. Is there any chance to find out what the two thousand nineteen or twenty files were reporting? Could you, you have a beautiful what you done here, reporting downtown. Is there any to compare it to two years ago or last year? Is there any way we can get that information or do you have that?
At this time, we don't, um, we can pull some, but when the shelter opened up in November twenty twenty, I dedicated a separate zone just for that reporting purpose, so that kind of, I can give you from November to December and then on, I guess.
So this is basically for once the two thousand twenty one.
Well, now, yeah.
Thank you.
Through the chair and chair to Trent, um, you mentioned that the lights on for the above view, um, that it's one way that you've been collecting that data for the red light tickets is, does that mean that there's no red light camera for any of the other directions for that intersection?
That is correct, yes. So in order to do that, we'd have to enter to another contract with Red Flex and increase in cost for hardware and whatnot. The original agreement signed in two thousand nineteen was that they would supply three locations, we picked the three, and then that's the three locations that we picked.
And is there a reason why you chose southbound?
Based on some of the reasons was it just based on our CNP, so for photo radar, all of our recommendations actually built into the police jurisdictions and here's the RCP. So those between discussions of the RCP and the border radar contractor, that's what the locations they decided that we have our most issues.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question myself, Trent. When we talk about municipal enforcement, you had seven hundred and thirty nine investigations, so you talked it's a pretty extensive workload, but the issuing of only nine tickets, so that's one ticket for every eighty investigation, so that's the potentially the the greatest number of investigations, but it's least number of tickets. How how do you um, explain that?
So for municipal enforcement, most of this obviously incorporates our community standard by law. So in order to deal with that, we could write a ticket for every infraction, it won't actually correct the problem. So therefore, we actually enter into our nuisance property contractor, send the property owner a bill for the cleanup, and that's how we actually enforce the municipal side more than in a ticket. So if we could write a hundred tickets, you know, never get that property cleaned up because it goes to court and we have to fight it. So as far as the efficiency, it's, we write the notice, we have to go to court order, we get the court order, we go clean it up, we send them a bill, we find that's more effective. It's actually correcting the problem versus writing. No, I can tell you the one. And did you want just overall like for the what year? Almost all of those will involve, so all of the investigative files will involve the compliance.
Uh, just a question for clarification about the satellites. So if you go speeding through red or you get two ticket. If you go men at the speed you're allowed, you go through a yellow light, you get a ticket?
No, no, yeah, no, so our system is strictly set up for red light infractions, so that red light, light has to be completely red before you enter the intersection, and then it'll take your picture and then obviously speed. So if it turns red and you've passed that line, it won't take your picture because it's considering you entering the intersection before it went red.
Thank you. I already paid a lot, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and all of council. We do have um, representation from the RCMP here today to give council an update on an incident that occurred Friday, so we'll let him go first, and then we'll get into the rest of the update.
Hello there, purple crimps. I'm well, how are you? Goodness. I clicked the button up on top there.
Can't see either. Alright, so the incident on Friday afternoon occurred around about eleven forty four in the morning. Um, nine one one dispatch received several calls of a male by on two A and thirty sixth avenue by the Horizon Center, walking down the highway with a firearm, a long barrel firearm. Um, I don't know all the, I haven't read all the entire files that came in. Um, we had several calls came into the back line for the detachment as well. Basically providing description of the male that he had a long barrel firearm walking down the street. Uh, the highway appeared to be very angry and agitated. So just at the time, we are preparing to do a search warrants, we had a lot of resources in town, including the uh, police service dog, our plainclothes unit, both from the crime reduction team and the general investigation, so the direction, several members went that way and um, determined that yes, there was a male, he did have a long barrel firearm plus a a uh, long barrel, a long bladed knife in his hand as well, walking down um, highway to a south towards Muscatis and was quite agitated and seeking the other control. So what ended up happening is our members took a drive-by on a plainclothes unit to confirm provided direction to our marked units and our marked units, and of course, we could see, most people have seen the video. They came up and they provided commands to him verbally, he dropped the firearm, dropped the firearm, because obviously that's the biggest concern. A firearm is probably the highest dangerous call that will go to. Um, they're very unpredictable, and of course, without saying that it has bad implications if it goes wrong, so minus reading the reports, the the individual dropped the firearm and the knife at one point, and then re-picked the firearm back up and the knife continued, continued walking south. Multiple commands were given to drop the weapons. As he continued south, he was getting closer to the civilian vehicles. In fact, one of them actually turned around and started to produce heat and back south. And at one point, our police service dog and the other members uh, had made a decision. Our use of force module is continual module, and it it doesn't, there's not a box that you check to determine what type of use of force that you're going to use. Um, as you can well appreciate, it goes from zero to ugly very, very quickly. So the decision at this point, since he was not complying with the commands, he hadn't pointed the firearm at anybody, but of course, that takes a fraction of a second. We have civilians. Um, he's getting closer to the civilians, we have our police vehicle and a number of members that are there. The decision at that point was to use the police vehicle to strike them in order to hopefully get him to stun him, to knock him down, to drop the firearm. The first attempt didn't, and as you can see, he gets back, he doesn't actually drop the weapon. So the decision was to deploy the vehicle again, which of course, this time it knocks him down, loses control of the firearm and the knife and the police service dog was deployed and he was taken to custody at that. Um, it's unconventional, obviously. The video doesn't look very good, but use of force doesn't, there's a number of options that the members would have gone through on a continuum to determine what type of force that would be used. And the reality is with a firearm, quite often lethal force is the only only way to actually stop that type of action. So number one, we're here to protect the public and our members, of course, and the again, unconventional, we're not trained in that. That's not something that we are trained in depth, it's not a course that we take, it's not an online course. It is something that we sometimes will have to use the least amount of force necessary, given whatever circumstances it is. And in this case, the decision was to use the vehicle. The individual um, wasn't really that injured, he's got some bite marks and some bruising, and he was uh, seen by a doctor and he's currently in Centennial Center right now. At one point, we requested the crown to review the file, and they'll determine what type of criminal charges, um, if any that will come out of it. Um, as far as an investigation will be in a review done by K Division um, to determine the whole totality of what what happened during the incident and if anything should come out of it or any other form of investigation or training out of it, so um, a quite dynamic, very quickly happening situation for our members, our members were okay, civilians were okay. The unfortunate thing is the social media gets out before we're even finished with it, and then sometimes we don't have a chance to, I don't want to say the word defend ourselves, is to explain the circumstances, so I've watched it once and that's enough for me, so. But yeah, so that's where we're at right now, um, since Inspector Grant would be out here explaining this as well, but he's out golfing and joined himself and uh, Staff Sergeant Gilchrist, the new Staff Sergeant, which I don't think you have met, she's out buying a house right now, so. We get to the old better, so if you have any, any questions, I can answer as much as I can, um.
I just want to comment, you guys, I think did a fabulous job on it. Walking away with nobody major injuries and stuff, because I think as if we all know this, this was down in the US with a, ended with a tragedy, so uh, looked bad, but the outcome came out good, so, thank you.
I think you're right now. You said one thing, uh, Facebook whatever doesn't actually tell the story. When I saw it and or heard it was all the guy, I even heard the guy was deaf, he didn't hear you guys, so, but it's nice hearing the truth, so I appreciate it, I we kind of laugh, but but you did your job, that's what you're there to protect, the citizens and if you want to listen, we'd be okay.
Yeah, and it's and it, you know, I've done this a long time and obviously it was in the past, been a long time, went to a lot of different things here, and it's unfortunate because I'll think do both in zero of a thousand or blink of an eye, and the public perception is quite often different than our perception because there's no music, there's no ultra slow motion, there's no replay, um, and it happens very quickly. And I'm glad this, to be honest, this is the best scenario that could have turned out here. Again, we'll, we'll take the heat, that's what it is. A lot of good support, appreciate those comments, uh, like I said, it puts the members in extremely difficult situation and uh, we are after having a briefing this afternoon on it, and we'll uh, open there, so.
Thank you, not a big, very show to Inspector Grant on Friday and express my gratitude for sure. Um, I know that there's a lot of heat that'll be taken over that and anything that I can do to help that to support the detachment and the members that were involved, let us know and we'll be sure to do that, and again, grateful for the work that you guys are doing.
I appreciate it, thank you. Yep, any else, just give us a call.
Thank you.
Yeah, so um, I was asked to give an update on. Yep. So I was asked to give an update on the status of the open door permit that I had requested. I'm still working with the open door. To try and gather the information to issue the permit. We have let them know that if we don't get the information that we may be moving to our next steps with enforcement of them doing work within the community without a permit, but we're continuing to work on this file and I'll keep you updated as we go. Are there specific questions related to that or is that sufficient? Okay. The next one is preventative maintenance and customer service. So I did get further clarification from council on this one and Kathy has some background information if needed, but basically it comes down to what direction do our staff have? Are they out there proactively looking to to replace infrastructure that is failing? And I guess the simple answer to that is we are, we are working through the process of our asset management plan. And through that asset management plan, it will develop. It will help us develop a life cycle similar to what we did with the facilities, the buildings that that came in front of council. So for instance, you know, we'll document all of the trees in the city. And then it the, the condition of them and the life expectancy, et cetera. And then it will, it will spit out an annual report for the parks department to say these trees need to be replaced in this year. And so it's going to help us a lot more with that proactive preventative maintenance. Same thing for park furniture, et cetera, et cetera. So we do have a business case coming forward to council at some point asking for a program that's going to help that happen. And so we can stay tuned on that. In the meantime, we're also working on how to manuals and making sure that staff feel empowered to make decisions in the field if they, they know that it fits within the process and it's going to help streamline some of the maintenance projects that we're working on. Are there any other questions related to that? Okay. Masking was the next piece. We do have the DEM here.
Staffing and that kind of thing. So for example, I received a notice to make appointment to have city staff come in and change water meters. And so I'm assuming large numbers of people are probably getting those, those requests. So the question becomes one are our staff vaccinated? Should they be going in? Should they be coming into my home? And how do we, how do we ensure the public or convince the public that it's safe for our staff to be there? I guess, do, do we have any kind of expectations with regard to masking and or vaccinations?
So currently, human resources is putting out a a staff survey. And it's going to speak a lot to COVID and how staff feel we're doing with our response to COVID. And if there's anything more we can do to help make staff feel comfortable, one of the questions on the survey is also related to who's vaccinated and who's not. We're trying to better understand if we have an issue. And one of the other things we're looking at too is making sure that staff that are exposed to the public are vaccinated and properly protecting the public. And so as we push the survey through and gather more information, we'll be making different decisions over the next couple of weeks. One of the protocols that the utilities department does have in place, I mean, they have everything right down to a hazmat suit to go in to try and make people feel comfortable. If people do not feel comfortable, we're, we're allowing them to say that and we, we would come back at a later date. But that meter replacement program was part of council's mandate to, to also get caught up on our three quarters of a million dollars in arrears for utility bills. So any of the deadheads or ones that we know are about to die, we're going in and replacing them all. So we're trying to balance the, the program needs and making sure that we're having accurate billing versus making sure that everybody's safe. And we do have the ability to go in and stay completely contained within a suit. But again, if, if the customers are not comfortable, they tell us that and then we rebook later. There has been chat, the GMs, we have sat down and had a discussion about this. And regionally, I am in contact with the other CAOs of the mid cities group. And everybody is watching what's happening right now with the big cities that are doing this like Calgary, Ottawa, everyone. We are not at that point right now. I, I think we first need to understand if we even have an issue with vaccination in our staff. And if we do, then what are we prepared to do about that?
No, I just go finish this up after the council meeting.